Good evening and welcome to the February eighth, twenty twenty four, school committee meeting. Tim Knight is traveling this week, so I will be leading the meeting here this evening. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with a roll call of the school committee members. Michelle.
Yeah, Brim here.
Well, Horn here.
Diana Frashella here.
Okay, um, and now I'd like to open public input. Members of the public will be welcome to comment during the public input either here or through Zoom. Please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here or in person, whether, sorry, whether you're in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. I just wanted to call your attention. I think there might have been a little error on the agenda with public comment. It said items, only items not on the agenda, which was an old, I think, an old footnote. I know that you're going to be talking about the school building project later on, but the update with the school building committee. I just wanted to, because the MSBA process is incredibly complicated, and I know that it's difficult for, for a lot of people to sort of get into the weeds on it. I did want to call out one specific thing that I, I think it's really important for school committee to be aware of, and that is regarding the amount of control that MSBA has over the designer selection. And so I'm just going to give you this page from the website. With MSBA, they actually have their own sort of hand, handpicked people, probably about more than a dozen. I think it's thirteen total that evaluate the designers and everybody has to rank them, rate them. And the district only gets to send three people to that. So they are automatically outnumbered with that selection process. So if you're going into that selection process, process, you really have your heart set on making sure that you have a designer, for example, that does both new and renovation work. You're not guaranteed to get somebody that specializes in both. Your rating and your rankings will be outweighed by everybody else that's sitting around that table. What was fascinating to me is that if you look at the Watertown Elementary School projects, they did three projects outside of the MSBA program. One of them is a beautiful, beautiful renovation of their Lowell Elementary School. And their circumstances around that school, very similar to Dale Street School. Very tight location, dense, pretty much same size enrollment. The footprint is about the same size of what we were hoping for. And they did it, they're actually, they just had the, the ribbon cutting in October. They went out to bid, I think it was twenty twenty-two, and it was a fifty million dollar project based on what I could find on their website. And they did that, that was a self-funded project. They were able to use a beautiful architect who did actually all three of their elementary school projects. And so they got economies of scale by working with that one particular architect. And they actually, they did, when they did all three elementary projects at once, they actually changed architects or project managers midstream because they weren't happy. If you're in the MSBA program, changing midstream on anything is very, very difficult. So I think I just want to make sure that the school committee is aware. MSBA is great when it comes to providing the money, but they will tie your hands in multiple, multiple ways. And it's very difficult to change course on pretty much anything once you're in that program, with enrollment, with designs, with anything. And it's just, you lose your flexibility. And, and Watertown basically came out and said that, that they purposely didn't go to MSBA to begin with because they wanted to have the flexibility. So I just want to make sure that school committee is just aware of that as you begin to talk about this process. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody online?
I don't have a person, but no hand, right?
Okay, so we will close public comment. Move up next to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the meeting minutes from our January twenty-fifth budget hearing and meeting, as well as some donations. For donations, we have five hundred dollars, the Medfield High School PTO to be, from the Medfield High School PTO to be deposited into the Medfield High School Student Activity Account, and a thousand dollars from Thornburg Investments to be deposited in the Wheelock School Gift Account. I'd like to note in the minutes, it says that Molly was there, but she was not. So when we make the motion, we'll pull that out. But does anyone have anything else around the consent agenda, the minutes or the donations? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes amended to remove Molly Chin from in attendance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The motion passes unanimously. All right, next up, we have our student advisory. So I'd like to welcome Molly. I think you're speaking on behalf of class twenty twenty-four. And then Michael and Tess are both here. You guys can pick your order on how you want to go, but very excited to hear what you have to say. Okay.
Hi, I'm Molly Chin. In place of Julie Keating, the representative of school committee for the class of twenty twenty-four. Currently, the twenty twenty-four soon government is selling pennant flags that say Medfield on them, and they're putting the word out in all schools. Their twelve dollars in links can be found on, on their Instagram or Concern Citizens slash Friends of Medfield. This is their last fundraiser ever, and any support would be greatly appreciated. They also just finished launching or planning the launch night, which is when the seniors spend the night at launch, the night before graduation. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Hello, my name is Tess Baki, and I'm the representative for the class of twenty twenty-six. As we mentioned in the last meeting, we provided community service opportunities for our grade through the senior center and shuttling driveways. Since that opportunity came up, we have had great participation, and our grade has been great about it. We've also started to talk about course selections for next year, as I think in March, we're going to be deciding them. So because we'll be juniors next year, next year will be our first year doing APs. And so I think our teachers have been really helpful in the process, and they've also reminded us not to overwhelm ourselves and for next year because it will be tough. And then for our movie night, we're planning on doing it sometime this spring. And we're also planning on having a raincoat fundraiser, so stay tuned.
What's a raincoat fundraiser?
So we're just selling raincoats.
Selling raincoats, okay.
Thanks, Jess.
Thanks, Jess.
Hello, my name is Michael Roth. I'm the representative of the school committee for the class of twenty twenty-five. Since, since the last meeting that I talked to, we, we did the winter drive with Cratos of Crayons, and that is ending tomorrow. So that, that went pretty well. I think it's almost full right now. We're also planning on doing a fundraiser with Chipotle, which I know DECA did last Saturday, and that was very successful for them. So we hope that it works out. The date's sometime in March. And then we also have decided that the theme for prom will be the Great Gatsby. And we started planning what decorations we want to buy for prom and the food.
Is it going to be home this year?
It's July.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
All right, thank you to our students. You're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go, except for Molly, you have to stay. Okay, let's see. Next up, we have, I'd like to welcome Nat Von, Mary Brule, and Stephen Marks, who are here to present a proposal about middle school unified basketball.
So I'd say this is something that we wanted to do for several years. And I know that Nat and Mary and Stephen are working hard on this. So we're excited about this opportunity for our kids, and I know that it's going to be well received by everyone. It's, it's really outstanding program.
Sorry about that. Hold on one second.
All right.
We need hold music. I know. We're really excited. We wanted to build the excitement. If we started talking right away, there's no, there's no suspense.
Yeah.
I took, I took control this time, too. I know where it is, I know.
There you go.
Look at that. I think Jeff said enough, that's great. No, thank you, everyone, for coming and listening tonight. We are excited for a new opportunity. This is something we've talked a lot about through the years, my time in Medfield now, is trying to bring unified sports to Medfield. And we have been kind of trying to think about the right school to start it at, the right population and the right timing. And meeting of the minds came together and really were able to get a proposal out that we think is pretty exciting to have us involved for this year for the unified sports. So just a little bit about what is unified sports. It's an inclusive program that really brings together students with and without disabilities to participate in sports as equals. It really fosters friendship, teamwork, and understanding.
So thinking to, just from a background piece, when you're talking, and you, you and Ashlyn have been part of unified sports, right?
Yeah, it's fortunate, I was the athletic director of the national team.
So benefits from first and foremost promoting inclusivity, which is definitely part of our culture anyhow, and also a big piece in the strategic plan. Unified sports allows students with and without disabilities to compete together. On the same team, promoting a culture of acceptance and understanding among our student body. Social, emotional development for all. You know, I can riddle out all the bullets, but really it does the idea of fostering a sense of belonging, which also coincidentally is our theme this year at Blake. And I know big push for our strategic plan within the district. Skill development, students of varying abilities, having the opportunity to develop their basketball skills in a supportive and encouraging environment, and community engagement, which is a huge piece that when we met with Special Olympics is really engaging the community beyond just the activity, what it might mean in working with community, both, I'd say, on a micro level at Blake, but also extending with all schools and the greater community, which is a piece.
And I think that was an exciting piece as well when we were meeting with them, is the opportunities to kind of grow from here, both to the high school as well as opportunities for non-sport oriented activities at the elementary level as well. And we are, you know, just excited that it would be able to bring even more inclusive opportunities and ways that we can have everyone involved together in meaningful ways. Yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
So the implementation plan, yeah.
The implementation plan. So what we would do is we would open up registration, and registration would be open to any student at Blake regardless of ability. And we would form a team. From there, we would hire a coach that would work with the team. They would probably have about two days a week. It would end up being probably one practice and one game. And, and the way that would work would be, there's a schedule that's already been made, and we would play two games. There would be a jamboree or a tournament towards the end. And again, there would be one practice along with one game a week. In terms of community outreach, we would be working with the students at Blake and the rest of the community and really try and get as many people, especially at the home game as we can. It, if you haven't had a chance to see unified basketball or unified sports in general, I highly encourage you to, to look up. We can send you some clips from other schools. When you pack the gym and have everybody in there cheering on the, the students and the coaches, it is an unbelievable event of all the different sporting events that at least I've been a part of it in my time that has been probably the most rewarding one that I've been a part of. So looking forward to having there. And we've been collaborating with the special, special education department, of course, in terms of setting it up and how we're going to structure everything in terms of the athletes and the partners.
And I, because actually what Stephen's saying is, you know, each year we've been part of for a number of years the Five Town Special Olympics. So we have that one-time event. It really is a one-time. There's a lot of work behind it, but every time, that has been such a meaningful experience for all of our kids. Really looking, excited about how we can integrate that into our realm. Right now, we're starting with basketball and maybe hopefully building from that for other activities. Also say, just on an individual level, my, live in Halston, and they have a pretty strong unified program. My son Owen has been involved as a junior now with, as a partner, working with that. And I would say, I mean, he loves sports, big basketball player. He says by far this is the most rewarding experience he's been a part of, and the relationships formed and, and educating on all levels. It's been amazing, and the jamboree, and just seeing the community outreach and partnership with other towns as well. It's, I feel, and it may sound cliche, but you hear like, this is what sports are all about. And it's really like with a lot of, not, not a lot of the nonsense that we all experience in other realms of sports about just.
Just playing and enjoying.
Playing and enjoying and helping each other out, and everyone grows. So really excited about it.
And it's an exciting time to do it as well because next year, we actually host the Five Town Special Olympics. So it would be, you know, exciting to have kind of this starting, and then next year, building on the success hopefully of this season and, and then hosting the Five Town Special Olympics in the spring next year.
We've offered that we'd be happy to be the host for the jamboree.
Yes.
For the other communities as well.
Absolutely.
It'd be great.
So for the budget for it this year, it's, it's a little bit easier. So part of what we get in starting a unified sports, the Special Olympics does donate five hundred dollars. So we were going to use that for a part of the coaching stipend. So we would not need the actual funding this year because of that. And then we just purchased new uniforms, which is very exciting for the athletes. Appending an approval tonight, we will be able to actually hit send on the order. And transportation, we do have access to the Warrior Van, and we also offered to host the jamboree, and we have a home game. So transportation is relatively little to nothing. The referees, we haven't. A referee who has volunteered to, to ref for free when we're hosting the game, so we wouldn't need to do that. The other piece, and you'll see that this is going to be through donations. As we said, part of the Special Olympics thing, they really want to develop, you know, all sides of students. So the athletes, the partnership, the connections, the communication, the community, and then the leadership. So they do ask that if there's going to be kind of an event, that the, that the team takes a leadership role in helping to plan, helping to collect donations, helping to get the word out. So we were talking about potentially doing kind of a, a leadership pizza party to celebrate the season, but to have the students taking the lead in terms of planning and organizing and collecting money and asking for donations. So that's, you know, kind of the, the overall need for that. You'll see that the stipend does go up slightly for the FY twenty-five, and that's really based off of the contract. What, when we take the typical season, middle school sports and divide it by the number of days and the number of weeks that actually would be, that's the exact kind of count for it. But other than that, it's a relatively low maintenance cost on our end with a, with a huge impact. Yeah, absolutely. We knew from our schedule.
It's.
Walpole.
Walpole, Canton, Westwood, and us would be our sort of division.
So we would have a, a way game in Walpole, host Westwood, and then Canton might be a scrimmage.
Yep.
Informal, and then we'd have the jamboree.
Yep. The season runs about five weeks long.
I know, I mean, through our, the middle school job alike, that I know other communities that have it in place at their high school are looking for other aspects. That's been part of our communication, too. And it's been great, too, just from our network of like our, our own staff who live in different communities and are more familiar with unified, because that, it hasn't been a part of Medfield's reality. It's been really great to say, oh, my gosh, I'm so glad I have a nephew or a niece. I know about my own family or friends in our community that have been doing that. I'm just so glad it's coming into Medfield, hopefully with your approval.
Sure, anytime.
On the team, or how many teams can there be, you know, if there's that much interest?
We, we would have one team. We would take, obviously, registrations. And one of the pieces that we need to kind of iron out is partners. Okay, so we have athletes, which would be students with disabilities, and partners would be, you know, students without disabilities playing together. There is a potential to expand on the partners piece, depending on how many signups we get. So if there's two days a week, we, we might not want to limit it and say, okay, we're just only going to take six partners. We would be able to expand it to more and, and have more people be a partner. So we would be one team, probably somewhere around twelve to fifteen total, total people.
Is there other, other sports than just basketball?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have dreams, Leo.
Tell us what you mean. My question was the growth potential with this.
There's, there's a huge growth potential, which I, I think was part of, for me, I got really excited. But I think, you know, as we were saying, there's many sports that you can do, some simpler. I mean, they have, they have unified track, they have unified bocce, which I think is really awesome.
We've talked a lot about that.
I just think that having the unified bocce team would bring a whole new group of students potentially than some of the other sports, and I want to be a part of that. And then they have, and this is both for middle and high. And then they have a lot of different, more activity-based things at the elementary level that they would help to support, which I think would be great. You know, we have been talking a lot at CPAC a lot with the principals, trying to think about ways to make sure that we have more intramural activities and more after-school activities that are available to students at the elementary level and that are accessible for students with disabilities as well. And so I think this is another way to partner and to kind of build on what we are hoping to move forward with. So lots of growth potential.
And we're excited. There's, there's, the way that kind of unified sports works is you could just sign up to just do one sport.
That's right.
Right? But if you engage the entire community, which is what we're going after, we don't just want us to be a one-shot thing. They call it a unified champion. So if you do all these different parts to it, the district becomes a unified champion district. And what's interesting and kind of nice, the way that this is working is in, in most districts, it starts at the high school, and then they try and scale it down to the middle school. We're starting at the middle school, and then hopefully going to be able to scale it up to the high school as our population changes. So it's a natural progression as opposed to the other way around, which is where it started in, in most other districts, so.
We already have an area picked out for the bocce court. We've already figured out where we're going to put it.
Have a lot of site with the bocce team.
I think it's awesome. I just think it's like a quick turnaround. And like, you can all have twelve or fifteen kids. I don't know what to do. Forty sign up, because it starts tomorrow, right? So I'm starting February ninth, I think.
I mean, if approved. The season starts.
I'm just nervous for like the logistics and like getting a team and a coach, and you have games in like three weeks. But I mean, you have my, my vote. I just, I have, when I saw the schedule, I was like, that, that's.
We work well under pressure.
What's that?
I said, we work well under pressure.
It's also, and I'll say, and I think we all share in that timeline, but you, you know, that's their suggested timeline, right? We have the ability to schedule games. We can move games. We can move practices. We have the ability. That's when they're saying this is the parameters of when they think the season should start.
And you'll see the rosters aren't even due until March eighth. So we say that we'll be starting kind of right after break, just because we'd love to get, get the teams going and moving. But we have some, some time in that, and there's not a game until the week of March eleventh. And again, there's lots of flexibility. It's only four teams, so we have.
I understand. It's just like, you know, gyms are packed, and you're.
Yeah. We, on our end, have been kind of looking through and making sure the logistics and the schedules and the, and, you know, we put forth a proposal earlier to Eric Scott to make sure that this was feasible in terms of athletics across the district. And then Eric convened a committee together with Nat and some site council to make sure that it fit the schedules and coordinations of everyone, because it is really fast.
I'm looking at the time, we're at March, we're at our gym and thinking about, we were before even thinking about, according with our intramurals, is the gym available? And you're right, it's, it's, it's truly hard to predict involvement and volunteership for the kids, for the middle school age and what the conditions are. And I think what we were saying is, we want to make sure we include as many, but not too many. So like, if we get a good problem that we sometimes have of like too many volunteers, like, how do we do that? We don't want to cut kids. We don't want to do that from the partner side.
Right.
You know, we'll try to figure out a system. We'll try to think about that to involve kids and to do that in different ways.
Continue with that track. You know, a lot of kids doing track, doing unified track. They do that, Wells do ours that.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Are you guys ready to vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, go for it. Yeah, sorry, Chris, would you mind speaking on the mic?
I'm curious about having sat in the policy review meetings, like the, like things like the concussion policy. Does it, something like that apply to something like this? Or is this under a different sort of governance umbrella? So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how it, how that works.
I would imagine it would apply.
Yeah.
I'll say that the way we plan on doing registration, once we get the, if we get the green light here, is to have students register the same exact way they do for athletics, so through the family ID system, all the same policies, all the same signups, so.
All the help, all the help paperwork works and everything would be.
Coordination with our nurses.
And that was part of kind of where we wanted to put forth the proposal. We wanted to make sure that, as we said, schedules allowed, time allowed, places allowed. And it was possible to get this into the registration system as well. It's a sport, and that's what, that's what we're asking is for, for it to be approved as an official sport. And so all of the same paperwork and systems would be in play.
I said I'm more worried about bocce than basketball, but.
We'll have helmets for bocce.
I'd like to call motion to approve the unified program at Blake Middle School.
Second, do it in a second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Yeah, thank you guys so much. I'm really excited.
Looking for registration, starting tomorrow.
At the jamboree to our calendars.
To get it set up.
I do, too. Yeah.
Yeah. We don't need to.
You know.
Yeah.
It will be good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, next up is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your materials, you had our draft twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year calendar with all of the release days, professional development days, holidays, et cetera, conferences. I just want to call your attention to the, what we'd like to add on the second page. And I, just to read it. "In the spirit of our core value of inclusivity, Medfield Public Schools has chosen to attach the second page to the district calendar to increase awareness of various holidays celebrated by families in our community. This list, while not exhaustive, represents the days that are the most significant to families in Medfield. Although these are not necessarily days off from school, each in their, each in, is an important reminder to offer our students flexibility as meaningful holidays present in students' lives." So, and there's a list of holidays, the dates of observance, that don't necessarily are on our calendar typically. But as I've spoken to parents in the last few months, that there's a desire for, for folks in the community to understand that, you know, there are people that celebrate different holidays in this community, and it's, it's good to know that, that they're there. So we think it's something that we would like to attach to our, our calendar with, you know, with your approval. And I think it sends a really good message that, you know, we're an inclusive community.
I like, I like it. I think it's a good, a good addition for people to be understanding of like other people's holidays and beliefs and things like that.
And we often, you know, talk to the teachers on some of these, some of them are no homework weekends, et cetera. So I think we would be, we, we would meet with the teachers and the principals would meet with the teachers just to kind of go over this, to make sure that if a student is celebrating a holiday that isn't normally on our calendar, to give them the flexibility they need, whether it's homework or tests. to give them the flexibility they need, whether it's homework or test or whatever, uh, we think that's a really important piece.
That's what I thought when I saw it. I think it's awesome for the teachers to have because if you are not of a religion or whatever, like it just sneaks up on you.
Right.
And sometimes it can lead to a, a tough interaction between the school and a parent or a kid or a family. Um, so I, I think it's a great ad just for that reason. So teachers do their best, but then it's just right there. Um, so you won't have huge tests or projects like the day after that.
Right.
It's not an alert in their system that pops up.
No, it's hard to keep track.
Yeah, it is.
Right. We also added high school graduation on here. We usually don't have that on the calendar. We added that on the calendar for next year.
Does that ever move?
I'm sorry?
Well, did that date ever move?
Um, it's always the, the, usually the Saturday or Sunday after Memorial Day weekend, so.
Like snow days don't affect it or anything like that?
No, definitely not.
Sorry, Molly. She's like, I will answer this one.
Molly, another, another storm coming this week on Monday. I know, but we're getting a storm. That ups, that ups the chances.
Hope so.
Yeah. None of you, none of your classmates want to delay. So just, we also have um all the, the conferences in there again, so middle school, high school, and also all the elementary days in there. So pretty packed calendar, as you can see. No, the ones that are in bold are actually state holidays. Yes. Mm-hmm. Right. Right. And the other thing I would just draw your attention to, we typically have a digital learning day in either the late winter, early spring. Uh, this year it's in April. Uh, the staff that work on that, that team really wanted to look at doing something in December this year and doing it earlier, and we got some feedback on that. So we have the full professional development day is on December tenth next year, not in, in the winter or in April. We used to have it in the winter, but then we got snowed out one year. So there's an awful lot of work that goes into planning for that and it was really, really awful that, that we couldn't have the day that day. It was, we had a, almost a blizzard that day. So they, they had asked for it to be put in the spring at that point and now they're thinking that, uh, and the teachers think that having it in December would be helpful for them because some of the things that they learn during that day, they can implement the entire year instead of just, you know, doing some in the spring and waiting for the fall to do some, so.
If I usually get asked about the number of half-days for teacher PD, and I know the PD time is contractual, as a big consideration. And I, I, I know it's come from the past, but I actually don't remember the outcomes. I think it was pre-pandemic.
Yeah.
Uh, about the idea of having more full days uh around PD as opposed to.
So contractually, it's six release days um that we have in the contract. Uh, I think the other issue around that is when we had this conversation years ago is that, uh, actually, parents too would rather get out earlier in June than stay later in June based on the additional days. Because remember, they, we used to have the day before Thanksgiving off as a full day off and not a half-day. And we changed that and then we, we looked at a couple of other days and made them half-days. So I think um, I think next contract, if that's something you folks want to talk about, then that's something.
But I did ask for the.
Yeah, for sure.
For the crowd, if anyone that are listening. But um, it does seem like the twenty-third is a little kind of pushing it more than usual in the month or last day.
Well, that'd be with the five cancellations.
Oh, with.
Yeah, the last day is the thirteenth.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so it's the thirteenth um without snow days and then with, because by law we have to put in the, what it would be with five cancellations. And that's something that's been on the books forever. They just make you do that on the calendar, so. I would ask that you approve if there's no questions or.
Are there any other questions? You ready to vote? Okay. Um, let's see, do I hear a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Marston, do you have any other items since posting?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Alright, moving on to budget update.
So we are scheduled to appear in front of the warrant committee uh on the thirteenth of February at seven, seven PM. Um, typically what we've done in that, when we go uh to the warrant committee is do a presentation of our budget and answer questions. I know that Michael has been working with the, the warrant committee liaison, Ed Vazella, the last couple of weeks. And they've been, they've met a couple of times and um, you know, Ed has been going over some numbers. And you know, Ed's a former business administrator for a school district, so he, he knows how the budgets work, which is great. I mean, he's, he's, he's a great ally to have on that committee because he knows so much about school budgets. But he is trying to do his due diligence so that he can present and support whatever we present on Tuesday. Um, and then translate some of the stuff for the new, new members, I think, of the, the warrant committee. So he has a deep understanding of, of school budgets in general and, and just getting to know our budget a little more. So, Mike, we have anything else to add on? I mean, we'll, we'll have a pretty good sense at, after the thirteenth, if they're going to want us to reduce our budget, cut our budget. Then we start having a lot more conversations about it, but we're still kind of in a holding pattern right now because we haven't heard.
The only thing is they might give us a new number on Friday.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay. So a new target?
A new target.
Okay. Hopefully that target's going up, Michael. Yeah, okay. So once again, once we do that, that meeting on the thirteenth, then we'll get a pretty good sense of what they're thinking. And then we'll have a lot more conversations here because we'll know what they're asking and whether we need to make reductions or not.
Okay. Questions? No, okay. Alright, next up, uh, SBC update. Um, so the SBC will be meeting on Monday, February twelfth, seven o'clock at the Public Safety Building. Uh, the agenda includes a discussion and vote for the statement of interest for the MSBA as well as the vote um on the responses that were received for the RFP. Um, also, again, for I guess people listening at home or for the, the three of you. Um, Steve Callahan gave a presentation to the SBC previously. And then this past warrant committee, he kind of gave a summary of it again. Um, it starts around like the ninety-minute mark, but I feel like it's a really great place to get a better understanding of kind of like the financial implications of MSBA and not MSBA. So just wanted to throw that out there. I thought it was very informative um on the potential tax implications for all of the people of our town. So Leo or Jeff, do you have anything to add?
No, we did get two vendors that submitted RFQs, so I forwarded those to the chair of the, the co-chairs of the school building committee. So I think they're going to have folks, you know, take a look at that and hopefully make a decision so we can get moving on that study.
Okay.
Yeah, just echo that, you know, since joining, I think that the idea is to do a very thorough and open process. And whether it's MSBA, an MSBA, you know, I think it's going to boil down to what we need and what's going to cost. So I think. Just as forwards, there's always a lot of questions and a lot of moving parts, so.
So we have the SOI as a conversation item at our next meeting in March. Uh, because there is a deadline in uh mid-April, thirteenth or fourteenth, whatever that date is, uh, to submit that to MSBA. So I know there'll be a conversation about it at school building committee. Um, you folks have to talk about it and decide what you want to direct me to do or not to. And then the select board, the same, so um, we're coming up in that, the month of March will be very important to iron all that out so we can either move forward with SOI or not.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, alright, next up, uh, community engagement and communication. Uh, we have our next informal conversation, uh, will be held virtually on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth at seven. I don't have any other communication updates right now, if anyone else.
We can talk about CPAC a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, I have a message from, from their board, uh, because last time, our last meeting, I mentioned that there are parent groups um, kind of based on diet involved, if you have a student who have a question. And then just a couple, a couple of days, well, CPAC's running a fundraiser. Um, they're still trying to sell, but it's so cards for thirty dollars on their website. Um, so if you want to support CPAC financially, you can do that. And then one of the, the, there's a couple of meetings, uh, one I really wanted to highlight was the, the new IP process. Mary Brule, who, who just spoke, is going to do that on March twelfth, um, and kind of go over the new IP process. So if you know those initials, have a student on IP, like you're, you, you might be looking for one from the school, um, March twelfth. I'm not sure, usually the meetings are in the middle school library. So I don't have the location here. I think that's the same, but lots of uh good work. Again, CPAC website, go there if you have any questions. Um, and then with the middle school PTO, um, no real big updates. Um, you tell, they, those, that board is so dedicated, they're meeting on Saturday morning at eight AM uh in a couple of days. So uh, they're out there working to do the, do everything they can for our middle school students, but those are my two groups.
Anything else? Okay, alright, next up, uh, school start times update.
So our first school start time committee meeting is scheduled for February twelfth, which is next Monday. Uh, Mary Brule was just here and Robert Parker, who is the high school principal, are going to be the co-chairs of the committee. And I think um, we're pretty excited about getting this work done. I think the, the initial meeting is just making sure that everyone knows who they are and, and meets people. And, and then we start to really look at, you know, what might be some of the challenges if we decide to change our school start times in the future and talk about some of those challenges and maybe some solutions. Um, and I know that uh Will and Tim are going to be school committee uh members on that. Um, and again, it's set up like our other, our other task force where um, the charge of this committee is to make a recommendation to me as superintendent for September twenty twenty-five. And then I hope to bring that recommendation to you uh for a vote in June. That's, that's our goal. We're looking at, we're looking at five meetings, um, starting on Monday and finishing uh the end of May and then hopefully that first meeting in June, having a, a recommendation for you folks. And that's the goal, but we, we have it all uh mapped out in terms of what we're going to be doing. We have a lot of, a lot of parents uh as a part of the group. I know in your packet you have the committee list, so pretty much almost equal amount of school and parents on there, which is great. So looking forward to it. I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in, but um, looking forward to the, getting into the process and seeing if we can make a change or not, to see what, what people.
That was one of the first of this area. And there's a lot of pushback, particularly on sports.
Right.
Um, and now it's just commonplace, yeah, so. Interesting to see.
I'm excited that all the parents that wanted to be on it are on it, uh, parents and community members.
Right.
Um, and some of them, like, are teachers that have gone through it with other districts and some of them are uh, I don't want to say, I don't put too much, but like, I mean, almost experts in the field, people that study this. So it's, it's awesome, a group of parents. We've had to have exchanged emails with them and then I've uh had conversations with some already, so.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, very exciting. Alright, next up is uh the policy update. Leo, do you want to take this?
Sure, so a very exciting process of the policy committee, uh, it's been hard to work as you can see. Um, Tim is not here, uh, there is a lot to review. Um, so we're not going to ask for a vote of any kind, but what we are going to ask you is to, is to go through. Um, I don't really think there was anything specific in this package of them uh that we want to look at. But please read through, there were a lot of changes and updating to modernize the policies. Um, I will say MASC has been very helpful uh in reviewing those and finding those. Of course, they've been doing it with a lot of folks. Um, and just reading out some of the, uh, all the language that's been around for a long time, so.
Yeah, Jim's doing great.
Yeah, he's been very, very good and patient.
Hmm.
Uh, so as we go through it, so um, yeah, that's about, uh, we have an update. I know Tim, uh, Tim has been, been lead since I was the latecomer, you know, on the back and forth with Jim. Um, in between meetings, but when we're all together, it is nose down, let's get through it. And appreciate Dr. Marston and, and the folks he has with him to, depending whatever it is. So it's a lot of planning and time out of their day as well, so. But I think once we're through it, it'll be nicely easily in searchable on the platform.
Be great.
Our goal.
Right. Okay, any questions on policy? Alright. Um, onto informational items.
So in your packet is the uh accept FY twenty-four quarter two report. So that's, you know, they do four updates for us, which we uh to superintendents and we pass on to school committee. So um, that's in there for your review.
Any other updates? I'm going to see the Blake musical on Saturday, so I think that'll be fun. And I saw that the high school has um a play production on March first and second. It's like it's loosely based on Harry Potter, so my kids were excited about that. Yeah. Anything else?
Happening, Molly?
Um.
I know she did.
Next, the next thing is, uh, hey, normally you do, in the heart, it's like a little, um, raising that you do. So at lunch, which we know is on the Thursday, you can, uh, be a little, we can have a story, we can. And we can like play, um, little notes, and then fly, um, so you have to, you know, and all the money that was made this case to date. And uh, we also met, we worked as a council on, on, on a Tuesday, we got with the, uh, playing provisions.
They're going to be inside this year or outside or?
Um, we want to be outside.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Nope, alright, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, our next meeting is March seventh. Uh, thank you, everybody.